Welcome to The Candidates, a four-part presidential town hall series brought to you by Daria Media and the Nigerian Television Authority, with the support of the Ma'atha Foundation. These town halls represent an opportunity for you to get to know the candidates who want your votes so they can lead Nigeria for the next four years. Today, we are in conversation with the candidates of the ruling All Progressives Congress, the APC. Retired General Muhammad Bouhari was born on 17th of December 1942 and is currently serving as the Commander-in-Chief of Nigerian Armed Forces and the President. He's a retired Major General in the Nigerian Army and previously served as the nation's head of state from 31st December 1980 to 27th August 1985, following the military war. In December 2014, he emerged as the presidential candidate of All Progressives Congress for the March 2015 general election. He won those elections, defeating the incumbent President Goodluck Jonathan. This marked the first time in the history of Nigeria that an incumbent president on Twitter at @DariaMedia or Instagram is booked at @DariaMedia, Instagram at @DariaMediaN. And throughout these programs, handles pull on you. Hashtag. Otherwise, questions, they get lost. Again, but to tell your friends and families that they can watch this program via stream, dtv.media and NTAN. Now, let me, President, you've been ruling Nigeria and want Nigerians to have an opportunity to govern another. Why?
Well, I... earlier I... let's look. Fighting. I am fighting. They're a command me. It's executive. I would contest. That same time fight all members of the fighting. So those who felt very strongly about it, they put the fighting. Why? I felt that three fundamental objectives we campaigned on thousands of years are still relevant. The want, why Nigerians see when we started thousands of years where we are now, what we have been able to in between time of being the happiest, the resources time available.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Vice President, you want to add a little bit more? Tell us a little bit more about why you think the Nigerian public should nominate you and Mr. President again to serve for another four years?
I think so. I think Mr. President has already pointed out that we had campaigned on the fundamental issues, namely the economy, corruption, fight against corruption. And in those three respects, we believe that we have laid a very strong foundation, very strongly believe that we are on to much, much, much more progress if given a second. I very strongly take the view that the period of three and a half years particularly has been one where we have managed to turn around. A lot of work was inherited in the previous sixteen years. Were, in my view, a period which a lot, well, a lot of revenue came, very little. And we believe that the foundations we've laid in agriculture of this laboratory and infrastructure, foundations we've laid there really deserve a second time for completion. I'm sure we'll come around to those specific issues.
Absolutely. But you talked about the three things you fought the first elections with and which you think you've done well. So maybe if we could take them one by one and see whether we can have a conversation. Let's start with corruption, because that was a big thing that President fought on. There's a perception that the general corruption fight that he under is a little bit and that it focuses on people who are not pro-government or who are not friends of this government, belong to our party. How do you respond to those allegations?
Which allegation?
That your corruption fight focuses only on people who are opponents of the APC, who are not friends of it.
Well, I think that's not a fair criticism of the people because it's not a fact, by fact. I don't think that anybody that has been pointed out corrupt in the last which we look the other's direction. I think I best can best illustrate my experience as well. I came in uniform in 19 We arrested the President, the Vice President, governors, the ministers, some administration and said they were guilty until they can prove themselves innocent. We put committees, investigation, almost based on your report of result. And so that were investigated, except two Nigerians, late Chairman Usman, a junior Minister of Industry, late Admiral Roma, governor of Central Bank, the Minister of Finance, were the only people who are found to have managed their resources with integrity. But I myself eventually was arrested, detained, and those people who were found guilty of misappropriating public funds were given back what they were to appropriate through thorough committee investigation. It's not just an allegation. They were given the chance. I decided to come now and now I have to be careful. People are just not arrested like that. When they hold position, if they made a wrong declaration, it's just one point. They didn't mention how many houses they have in Europe and America or Asia. They didn't mention companies they floated, contracts they gave them. It's eventually uncovered. They are faced in court with the documents.
So, Mr. President, you're here obviously referring to the case of the Chief Justice of the Federation. Or who are you referring to? Is that an example? Because you talked about people who not declaring. This is what is topical now and I'm wondering whether that is the case you're...
That's all right. You have to review that culturally.
Okay. Let me ask it another way. You've talked about people who do wrongdoing and been investigated. There are cases of people that are thought to be very close to you. An example is the former secretary to the federal government, Malam Babachim, allegedly accused taking money that was meant for IDPs and awarding contracts to himself. As far as we know, EFCC has not investigated him, even though he has lost his job. He is one of few other examples of people who are in government who've got petitions against them in front of the EFCC and the EFCC is not investigating. And the general perception is that the reason why those investigations are not taking place is because these are people who are either close to the government or who are in government.
Well, I clear about but can mention that.
I'll give you an example.
Yes.
Your, I said Babachim, the former SGF, the Minister of Housing, Mr. Raji Fashola. There's a petition in front of the EFCC by an NGO. And as far as I know, that has not been investigated. So are you... I'm trying to understand whether you are aware of these things and if this is part of, as it is alleged, part of a policy not to investigate people in government?
Well, we can't be fair to I told you why I have to help. And if anybody, the public should help us. If there are strong allegations backed by evidence, bank cards, names of companies floated, contracts awarded, then we take them for the courts through EFCC and ICP. And we have to trust the system and allow them to complete the investigation. If we just just take people in as we did during the military, lock them up, this system, the present system, multi-party democracy, does not approve that. If you accuse any person, you have to produce the evidence in court for him to be prosecuted. So there's strong allegation, the government may decide to ask people to go. Like Kuma, the person you mentioned, asking him to go. But if anybody...
But the question is, after asking him to go, how come he hasn't been prosecuted? Which is what Nigerians are wondering. If there was a strong enough evidence to ask him to go, it means there's an indication that maybe he did something wrong. Why hasn't he been presented before a court and charged with corrupt practices?
It's still before. I think the matter is already before the EFCC. And I believe that, in fact, a directive has been issued regarding all persons have cases for the I'm sure that you will find that each and every person who has an issue against that duly investigated will be put on trial, without a doubt. Each person.
Okay. Let me specifically come to you because the National Assembly has also raised, what they say are concerns, about money that was misspent within the presidential unit on the northeast. You chair that unit and they say you basically appropriated money without going through your protocol. How do you respond to that?
No, I think the allegation was that money, that sub-money, which was approved for the emergency intervention was without approval.
Yes.
But that's not correct at all. We pointed out very clearly that while I was acting President, sums of money were duly appropriated. As part of that, if they had looked and we've shown all the evidence and I do not think that we have seen Scott a reply. What we were able to show them was very clearly this. The CBN, as a central bank of Nigeria, controls the strategic terms, I call just strategic. They are the ones who raised a memo being saying specifically what was required for the office of adventure and where the funds would be will be taken. The funds were taken from what is called the rice levy, which is a duly appropriated fund. And after that, we then, I then approved the sum properly appropriate.
Are you at all concerned about some of the allegations raised about that, the spending with that particular fund? Where they are running that, the agency?
I'm not at all concerned. How did I believe that? Unfortunately, a good part of that was lies and, you know, allegations of mine here and there. That was a very comprehensive, very, very comprehensive. What happened was that after the World Food Programme had said that they were no longer able to feed the numbers they were feeding, there was a need for us to intervene because hundreds of people were coming out.
So it was an emergency situation?
Oh, yeah. It was an emergency situation. And then what then happened was we then took a very detailed process. I said it started from the central bank, central bank. We have four companies that hold our strategic and they are major grain companies. Olam, Walcott, Dangote, it has one more that's unfulfilled. They hold this. So everything was done properly. The Nigerian Armed Forces, the army, the air force, the navy, all of them, the police, all of them were involved in the distribution process, including the air force. Each service chief sent a senior representative involved in the process of distribution. We then went a further step. We created an office in Maiduguri where we have a tracking device. We could actually see the buses, I'm sorry, the trucks as they went from point to point from our offices in Maiduguri. We then included members of the National Assembly from the northeast zone to ensure that they were carried along and they understood what exactly...
So why do you think the National Assembly would make such a serious allegation?
Well, the National Assembly, as you know, I think that what they were saying and the reason why they were saying whatever they said would be left to them. But I think that as far as we are concerned, we went through the appropriate process and we did the distribution appropriately. I don't know exactly. If you look at the whole, if you look at the entire report, the only line of that report where there was any kind of allegation, at least against me, was to say the money was not duly appropriated by the National Assembly. But we proved that that money was duly appropriated by them. And there was no further allegation as far as I could see, telling my past as acting president.
Now, the National Assembly in talking about quoted Section 80 of Section 4, which basically says that you can't appropriate any money, whether it's from the consolidated account, anything considered public funds, without going to the National Assembly. And in their view, that process didn't take place.
The point I'm making is that their view was absolutely wrong because it wasn't based on facts. We provided for them evidence that they obviously did not have the time when they were making. And that evidence was the fact that the Central Bank of Nigeria was the one that originated the memorandum from an appropriated fund. That fund is called the rice levy. The rice levy is a line item in our budget. So it's already appropriated by the National Assembly. So I think that they were wrong.
Yeah. Let's open up the conversation. Town hall. I don't want... Well, I'm there too. Call me maybe two, three. Please introduce yourself. Ask your go back and come back to Mr. President and Mr. So the gentleman at the other end then there's a lady right at the the gentleman in brown hat. Okay.
Good evening, Your Excellency. My name is Usman Suleman Jau. Lawyer. My question is tell it to the President, the issue of Al-Majri. Now, you're Al-Majri, Al-Majri.
Al-Majri.
Not Al-Majri. Al-Majriya. Your Excellency, this, I believe, is a major challenge for now. Sure, so many don't believe something we should need to do. So what's your opinion on that? And I strongly think it's important, Your Excellency, if you can do something about it. Now, this is because we've seen it that you're one of those that can make difficult decisions and can be accepted in Nigeria.
Okay.
The full subsidy, for example.
No, no, you've asked your question. I'm not on the I'm not on the You'll be surprised at how quickly the
Mr. President can do something about it. I'm sure it can help that acceptance.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Please come. Yes.
Good evening, Mr. President, sir. This, my question is this. How soon will be national...
Please, can you introduce yourself?
My name is Usman Abu Bakar. How soon will be national livestock development plan will be implemented? First to address the challenge. Thank you, Mr. President.
Livestock. Livestock plan.
National livestock.
I will talk. I'll talk about that. I'm the chairman of the I will talk. What you did? National livestock.
Thank you, sir.
Oh. Livestock plan.
My name is Richard Ezekiel. I stand here on behalf of 25 million persons with disabilities in Nigeria. I just wanted to ask how far about the disability bill?
Okay. How far about? With the disability bill, what your plans are for the Al-Majri in the north? There was a question about the livestock plan and finally, there was a question about the disability bill because there are about 25 million people who thought to live with some form of disability in Nigeria. People are interested in knowing what this government is going to do about improving their situation. Maybe we start with Al-Majri with Mr. President?
Yes. What the Al-Majri case income we have to look at the criteria of government responsibility. Federal, states, the local government, the allocation of resources, revenue allocation formula and so relative to the resources available to the country. What is a chance to reach richer governments? So the question of Al-Majri case, that's lack of virtually primary, the basic education are all local governments who even if, even if the center has extra money, they would take it and build classrooms, you could, for example, employ qualified teachers from the federal revenue while it is the duty of the local government. If the local governments are not being given the money by the governors or by the state, then it's up to the the local government to come together and scream loud enough for Nigerians to hear them so that so that there will be proper allocation of resources by the constitution.
Mr. President, part of...
That's for the Al-Majri's.
Yes, sir. Let me just ask a little follow-up question regarding that. Part of the frustrations that some people have with the way Nigeria is structured is that we seem to have sometimes confusion. So technically, we'd sort of say something like primary education resides with local government. But then you have agencies like the Universal Basic Education Agency, which is a federal agency and which has some role to play in primary education. And part of this confusion is why people say, for example, we need to restructure and move some things from exclusive list from concurrent list to the residual list. What are your thoughts regarding restructuring, particularly in relation to education?
My thought is that firstly, there must be a lot of education. And this, I recommend feel led by the press to expose what relationship the how effective the governments are spending to local governments. One is to know from the center. If that is not done, then it's very difficult for the federal government under this dispensation to enforce education at all levels by respective states, by the state, the local government or the center itself. I will give, I think, some examples. In in some of the investigations, it was uncovered that local government chairman were made to sign for the money that are supposed to be their allocation. But they would only be given about 25% of the money. The rest will be taken by the governor. There are investigations in some of the states that are showing that. So I am expecting the press on behalf of the people to make an in-depth investigation and expose corrupt governors and local government chairman.
Okay, sir. Would you would you be willing to examine the Ubeck funds? Because those reside with the federal government, yet they are actually meant for primary education. So they are normally dispersed, I believe, by the federal government.
Well, I think what has happened so far in Ubeck, I think there are agencies of government, federal agencies, that in some senses support the, support local government and states. But the bulk, clearly, primary education has been high squarely in the hands of local government. But I think with Ubeck, what happened with Ubeck is that Ubeck has an arrangement where they say if, if the state so if, so if there's 20 million they'll say, well, the state should bring its own counterpart fund of a certain amount of money, 20% of the 5%. Now, that percentage is what the states ought to bring to the table before have access to Ubeck fund. Most states never access Most states never access the U B A C fund, they simply said they didn't have the counterpart fund.
But don't, don't you find that problematic though?
Excuse me, what has happened, what has happened now? Is that from the Paris Club reforms, that was given to the state. The federal government now paid off all of their counterpart fund for all states and now, and now access U B A C fund without any hindrance whatsoever.
Okay. Now, the other questions are to do with disability and with the livestock. The livestock plan, I think.
Disability.
Yeah, okay, we'll start with disability, yes, Mr. President?
Well, I, I honestly can't remember this uh, the plan being taken to the National Assembly, how much they have commented on it, send it back to the center. It's the same thing as it is with the bill. Um, there are so much with the, with um National Assembly. And unfortunately, as I mentioned, I expect honestly it, press through the, to keep an eye, keep attention on the bills executive National Assembly. Uh, if the executive send a bill, they can hardly uh put it in the budget unless it is returned from the National Assembly with their comments or their recommendations.
So we, we will find out what's happening with that bill with the National.
But a lot of time has been wasted.
Right, okay, Mr. President. Now, um, I, I'd like to do a little follow-up question regarding this line. Because um, we, we got a question from this now, I'll try and dig up. Where they were asking, how do you intend to bring uh a permanence to the difficulties, conflicts going on between farmers and herdsman?
No, uh, I, I.
Yeah, so, so the conflict, the conflict between farmers and herds, yes, and herders.
Well, um, what, what happened, started from Benewist. Fortunately, and um, we foresaw that. When I say we are in the federal room, we asked the Minister of Agriculture and Development to go to the archives, find out the results from the first republic, where those incredible leadership of the first republic. There was cattle root, there was grazing areas, there was limited resources, they put windmills, half dams, and even veterinary clinics. But subsequent, very important personalities, they encroached on the cattle roots, the grazing areas. And if a hard eye has two hundred cattle, they have just eaten, whichever they are way to, to the water port, they would just go. And I think the Minister of Agriculture and Water, who have produced the maps, which mine.
But, but, but these are old maps and, and this is today's problem. So we might have had a solution to this many years ago in the sixties with the routes and everything. Clearly, that solution is no longer tendable now. And so the issue is, this is, these are urgent problems facing now. People are dying, people are getting killed, conflict is breaking out. Um, what are we going to do about it, like now?
What we are doing about, we have already started. Uh, we have to ask especially the governors. The movement is from north to south, quite predictable. Um, after harvest, so cattle have to move south or to water pasture. And then our borders, for example, it relates to a binary problem, about one thousand four hundred kilometers. Was in Niger alone, and look at the Camero's one. And uh, effectively, Sabi that bordered when structures were tampered with in terms of cattle grazing area. Very difficult. We have sent this impact to the Minister of Agriculture and Development, to the governors, so that we can create these corridors. But for a government like Benewist, when they said they have banned um cattle rearing, they have banned grazing. We are in the country, um, I expect a government to insist on the routes to be reestablished, a grazing area. But to say that cattle cannot move, it's, it's very difficult. Benewist is complaining, but they answer they are already in, in Belsa, from there are they going into the Atlantic?
Okay, Mr. President, yeah, but can I, can I just quickly, because, because you know, okay, go on.
Let me add a comment to that. Um, part of what, because when the matter was set to the government, I, I chaired the, the National Economic Council. And um, part of the plan that the National Economic Council laid out for the livestock transformation, all of the governors in the so-called frontline state are also involved in. And I think that one of the very important points that emerged, the discussions at National Economic Council, was the fact that there was a need to ensure that we were able to create some access to places, to grazing area. And I think that that's a point also that Mr. President is making, that in order to be, for instance, anywhere where cattle are, you must still have some kind of access. So that you then have an area where it could be a ranch, it could just be a place where you have earth dams, it could be a place where you just have water, where, you know, whatever it is. And we then agreed with the governors that, because federal government has no land, only state governments, state governments. But then agreed with the state government, that okay, anyone that is willing, they will put together the resources. If private people want to put together the resources and build uh those areas, called ranches, grazing areas, whatever you call them. And people will pay appropriate fees, that where they pay appropriate, use the facility and go back whenever they want to go back, because clearly, somebody has to bring those cattle that way. And we tried to say that that was an interim phase, because as time goes on, you may, you, you will eventually be able to stop uh grazing from one point to the other, but that will take time.
Yeah, well, so the point is basically, uh, Mr. President himself owns, you know, cattle, everybody knows. He's very proud of his cows in Daura, talks about them all the time. But the perception is that he, um, Mr. President is a little bit biased, because these are his people that are involved. And that instead of facing the fact that in the twenty-first century, there's really no room for the cattle rearing in the way we're doing it and coming up with modern ways of cattle rearing, we're trying to hold on to an old-fashioned way of rearing meat.
No, but you pointed out already, let me, let me, uh, let me be Mr. President's counsel. You pointed out already that he has his cattle, ranching farm. I don't think that's old-fashioned, but I think it's very, that, that is correct. I have your point somewhere. But I think that the matter really is one, as I said, that is within the province of the National Economic Council. And that's why the governors took it, because the federal government cannot determine what will happen in any state. Because the states themselves pass laws on their land and the use of their land. We don't have land except federal land, so there's really no way that we can do much of that. And that's why we decided to hold the National Economic Council, set up a committee on the livestock transformation plan. And we're working with the state government. And many of the state governments have given land for purposes of ranching, they've given land for, as grazing area. We are building earth dams in many of the, and I'm the chairman of that particular.
Now, the thing is, there's though, well, well, when you think in terms of the problem farmers and herders going through, it's a problem that goes beyond uh the right of way, because obviously, there's issues around climate. And I am still a little bit confused about what the government policy is that underpins, you know, our, our, the way we deal with issues around climate, which are sort of the long-term things that you must look at. You have to come up with a solution that is going to last.
I think, I, I, I think that that is precisely the point that is being made. But let, let me explain perhaps, I need to go into a bit more detail about the work of the National Economic Council on this livestock transformation. As I said, the reason why we had to construct the governors into where we had to construct ourselves, the committee, was precisely because we recognized that the reason why we have all these clashes between herdsman and farmers is because of desertification, is because of the, of all of the conflict over pasture, water. A lot of that is climate change related. Now, every state controls territory, every state controls land. And under the land user, it is a state government that has absolute control over the land of its. It is the state government that gives you permission, even the federal government, whatever you want to do on their land, they must give development uh control from it, even if it's on federal land, if there's any land that's federal. Now, that's why we start with the state governments. We decided that, oh, this is an issue that's almost seasonal and it's getting worse now because of desertification. Now, there's so, especially coming from the Sahel.
So I guess the question I was trying to ask was whether there's a policy around desertification and climate change and, and, and what the government is doing to mitigate this thing.
Of course, of course, clearly there is. And one of the major, one of the major uh policies i- is, is what is called the Green Wall Project. We have the Green Wall Project, basically to control desertification coming from. The Minister of Environment has been working on that for years. Now, the other issue, of course, is that we're also cooperating with our neighbors on, on, on desertification issue. That's our, our neighbors in the northern part of, in, in North Africa. They're also cooperating with the northern part of West Africa, uh Niger, Chad, etc. And then there's also the project to recharge the lake chart, because that's one of the very important projects. And Mr. President is the one who particularly pushed the lake chart project. To recharge it, because as you know, the lake chart is almost completely shrunk uh from about thirty-five thousand square meters, about one thousand three hundred or so square meters. So we need to recharge the lake chart from the Congo basin, and that's one of the projects.
Okay, before we go for a break, I want you to just quickly clarify for me, what is the federal government policy when it comes to mitigating this conflict? Is it to have ranches or is it to continue having these grazing corridors? Is it a mixture of the two?
It's a, it's, for now, what we have is a mixture. What we have is a mixture now, because, but ultimately, what the governors are, in that, in their respective, they will provide for those who want to do business of ranching, sufficient space to do. In the interim, they are building earth dams, so that cows coming, uh cattle coming from the north, especially going towards uh the riverbank. And you'll find that a lot of these conflicts are in those areas, are able to, even before they get anywhere near, able to access earth dams, water from the earth, access veterinary care and all of that. So the long-term plan, of course, is to eventually create ranches, because ranches have to be privately, government cannot. But at the moment, you can't just suddenly one day say, no more grazing, that's the end of it. Immediately, that doesn't happen anywhere. And in all of the places where the problem has been solved, because the governors cancelled that committee, we studied it very carefully, we looked at everywhere where the problem has been solved. It was a gradual process, it's that same gradual process that we are going through.
Okay, we will take a quick break, don't worry about it.